...of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just key on the roll, please.
Kerry Oatch, Ward 1. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmyer, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lloyd Frutt, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you very much, Connie. The first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from September 5. Council, you've given these earlier in the week and have had an opportunity to review them. Chair will entertain any edits or corrections if there are none. A motion would be in order.
May I make a motion to approve?
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Minutes are approved unanimously. We have a public hearing, and Richard, if you'll start us off with the urban redevelopment plan update.
Thank you, Mayor. This item serves as the required quarterly update for redevelopment activities. For the North Town renovation project, Grand Administrator Rhonda Gilbert, on August 29th, met with state DCA representatives to request info on dates to proceed with work on the proposed seven houses. Ms. Gilbert is waiting to hear back from DCA at this point. Second item is a new house at 74 Quail Run off North Tennessee Street. City staff is working with Northwest Georgia Regional Commission on a new house that will be built on the site where a dilapidated 1980's residence was recently demolished. And the third item is our public hearing. This is related to the proposed amendment to the urban redevelopment plan related to the Caswhite Road area. See on the screen, the proposed boundary, which would be a joint city-county application for an opportunity zone. Staff has been working on this revision to the plan adopted by mayor and council first in 2010, amended in 2011. The revision would add a new boundary area of 36 parcels adjacent to Caswhite Road near I-75, one of which would be in the city limits. By amending the plan, company reps in this area may be able to obtain increased job tax credits for new full-time hiring. If council approves the amendment, staff would work with Bartow County to apply for city-county opportunity zone. The regional commission that I mentioned earlier is preparing an urban redevelopment plan for the county. If approved by Commissioner Taylor, Bartow County would take the lead in applying for the opportunity zone. The city would be asked to submit a letter of authorization signed by the mayor to accompany this application. Property owner of the parcel in the city limits, which is Bartow-Cartersville Second Joint Development Authority, is amenable to this amendment. This meeting serves as a legally advertised public hearing to discuss the proposed revision. No action will be taken at this meeting. The date of the proposed adoption of the revised city urban redevelopment plan is October 17, which will also be a legally advertised public hearing. If you will, please, Mayor, open it up for the hearing.
Thanks, Richard, and I will do that. I'll open up a public hearing relative to this urban redevelopment plan, and anybody who wishes to step forward and speak about it can do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. As Richard alluded to, no action required by council this evening on this particular item, so we'll move on. Next item is file Z-13-04. Mr. Menino.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This case hasn't been properly advertised and posted. There appears to be no conflicts, and it was reviewed based on the standards for exercise of zoning powers. This particular property, 33-acre tract located on the east side of 75 at the end of Main Street, has had plans going on for more than 10 years. Prior to my arrival with city of Cartersville, there was a master plan for the whole entire tract, which included this smaller portion of it, 33 acres. This particular tract is currently zoned office-commercial, and it is in the Main Street overlay district, and the applicant is looking to rezone it from the OC with the Main Street overlay district to the GC, and it would still remain in the overlay district. The biggest change in with the applicant was that first started him down this path was the change in height requirements. OC allows up to three and a half stories or 45 feet. The GC does allow up to 60 feet in height or four stories. There was some discussion regarding Homewood Suites or Hilton product out there, and again, the necessity or having the ability to go up to four stories on this particular piece of property was futile with them to move forward. Again, there's 33 acres. This would be one tract that I'm speaking of, the possibility of a hotel on that site. The remaining tracts would come during future-type development. There is a preliminary plat that is in review by the city right now. The individual departments from the city that review zoning applications have reviewed it. There have been no objections from the city departments. Additionally, the planning commission did hold a public hearing on this and does recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Menino at this point?
Mayor, I do. Randy, would you or Richard, one, mind pointing out exactly, did you say 33 acres?
Yes.
Yes. And then we talked about a potential roundabout. Will you mind pointing out?
That would be at the end of, we're Main Street ends right now, and then their development starts.
It starts right there?
Yes.
So where does Pine Mountain Reserve start?
If you go below that, I don't know if you can see it on that track. Let me see if we got it. Not showing up on that particular map, but...
See that line where it's on the link there? That's the part that that is, that's the property that the city is just, that's Pine Mountain.
Okay, there you go.
So who owns the property between that line? The wooded, what I'm looking at, it's wooded property. Who, is this same company?
That's part of this property. That is.
That's part of it?
Yes.
So it's not just the cleared piece?
That is.
Sorry? The wooded part to the right of the top of the ridge is not part of our property. That's the down top there for somebody else.
So just where it's cleared?
And actually, sir, if you, if you would, just step up. No, no, you're more than welcome to shed some light on the subject. Come on to step forward, because you're old.
This is Jeff Royal. He is the representative.
Hi, Jeff. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Step forward if you'll give your name and address for our clerk, and then we'll be happy to enlighten us. No, that's, that's why you're here in Ward.
My name's Jeff Royal. I represent the landowner from Madison, Georgia, 258 West Washington Street. And yeah, so you'll see kind of a squiggly line just up and to the right of the cleared area. That's the property line for the 33 acres.
May I interrupt you, Mr. Royal? Randy, or Richard, can you let him borrow your pointer? Your pointer, so we can... Thank you.
Look on connector 1, may I, that bar from between Pine Mountain?
Can you show me how to use that? There's about 20 different buttons on there, so...
I got the laser.
There, Richard's good.
Okay.
There we go.
So you got right here.
Yeah, there's the 33 acres. You see the yellow line right there?
The entrance to the park is over here. There's a little, you see a little cleared area there, and this has come onto, this has really all come onto property, but the previous landowners who did the larger development here, who we bought the small parcel from, dedicated a little piece of land along with Kamatsu to create the parking area for those trails. And the roundabout would be right at the end of East Main Street.
And the potential hotel site, as you see it now, would be about?
Right here, yeah. Right, basically at the end of East Main Street. We haven't had any activity or interest on the property in a long time, partially because of visibility and access, and it's just not very attractive there when you come off the interstate. But because of Emerson and, you know, some other sort of upticks just in general, what we're trying to do is first get a hotel located here on the lot, right in front of East Main Street, and then from there, just basically a light commercial subdivision for the property. And that's why we're going for the general commercial, is it's more appropriate for the type of development that we've been advised would be feasible. And as he mentioned, in particular, the one hotel that we've been talking to has required four stories on the property, and the GC would allow for that.
So I just want to make sure I understand the scope of this. The application is for the entire 33-acre tract?
Right.
Going from office-commercial to general-commercial. There's no definite plan yet on any of the property, but there's a plat that's been filed?
They would have to do a preliminary plat to cut any lots off. That would be the first step before they can even get a billable lot for refusal.
And that hasn't, I thought, I thought I heard you said they did that?
There has been a plat that has been submitted to the city that is in review. There has not been a plat approved.
We're basically just in discussions. The thing holding the plat up was the roundabout design, which I've been working with the DOT and the city to find something sort of mutually agreeable. And without the roundabout design, as we expected, we can't submit a final plat for the subdivision. But, but, you know, it makes more sense to do the rezone on the entire piece of property.
And where's, if that's, that's a long piece of property, where exactly is, is that one road that just goes, kind of cuts down through the middle of it?
Right. It just kind of, there was a, there is a right-of-way that just goes right down this property here.
And then we would just have commercial buildings on both sides all the way down?
Right. So there's, there's eight lots. It's actually seven lots. And yeah, right now, we're opposed a street with a little cul-de-sac right here that would serve two commercial lots here and two here. And then if we can get the activity going on these lots and create some interest back here, we would extend the road to the back.
Mr. Royal, what, how much acreage does the hotel take? Do you know approximately?
Well, usable, they need about 1.6 acres, but with the grade here, the tract that they're looking at is about, I want to say 4.9, I think the tract is.
Six, five.
Okay, 5.96, so just under six acres. But only a small sort of piece of it is buildable, as that's a very steep grade there coming down the mountain.
Okay. Any questions? All right. While you're up, we're in the middle of a public hearing. Anything else you want to add?
That's pretty straightforward, highest and best use.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to step forward to speak for against this application? Z-13-04 may step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing relative to Z-13-04. Council will take this up for final consideration at our first meeting in October. We'll move on to, Greg, I think you've got the next three items. Why don't you go ahead and kick us off?
Yes, your mayor and council. This is an encroachment agreement with Georgia Power. This is for, for the Leakey-Mounds Trail. This, this encroachment reason is required for this project. It's a standard encroachment agreement by Georgia Power. I recommend approval.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. All right. Motion carries. Continue on Greg.
The Jakes Morgan Gym, the city entered into an agreement in 2001 with the Etowah Valley Housing Authority. What that agreement states, one of the things it stated was if the Jakes Morgan Gym floor needed replacing, that the city would split half, would split half that cost. And we made it 13 years, but now that floor needs replacing. And I've got a letter from Mr. Gray of the Housing Authority requesting that we do this. So I recommend approval of this mechanism for this, for the city and the Housing Authority to split the cost of this.
Any discussion on this item? And if there is no discussion, a motion would be in order. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Continue, Greg.
Now, for part of the, part of this cost, we sent bids for the installation of this, of the floor, the subfloor. The low bid was from Earl Hightower Construction. We received two bids. The low bid, $25,000, which is my recommendation. I'm also bidding, recommending for subfloor material from Lowe's in the amount of $14,418.87. Also for hardwood floor from Southern Wholesale Flooring out of Kennesaw in the amount of $11,780.70. I recommend approval of these purchases.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Anderson on this item?
Mayor, I do.
Go right ahead.
Greg, when we have these mandatory pre-meetings, is everybody notified?
Yes, we, but they were, they, it was spelled out in, in the bid that they received, plus we, we, we called, we called each one of them to make sure they were going to be there. Well, two of them just didn't show, and then one of them decided not to get on it.
Just wanted to make sure they had the information.
You don't let Jason, the mayor, check up for dead spots after you get it in?
We can. Yeah, we're going to have a little spring floor in this right here, so.
I'll give you a demonstration of the jumper, which you'd like if you, if you'd need to see one.
No, I passed that.
Thank you. That notwithstanding, if there's no further discussion or snide comments from the city manager about this item, the chair will entertain a motion.
Just remembering the days of my youth, that's all.
Mayor, I make, I make a motion that we approve it as recommended on all three items.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
He was above the argument. Mr. Sanders, you have the next item.
Argument?
Off-system safety project award.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a bid award. On August 30th, we had conducted a public bid opening for off-system safety project The project consists of signing and striping of nine city streets. We only received one bid. It was from Peak Pavement Markings, and the bid was $89,995. The grant from Georgia DOT was $93,000, so the project didn't come in under the grant amount. It's a reimbursable grant, and we recommend that you award this contract to Peak Paving.
Question for Tommy on this item.
Just one quick question. I didn't ask this in the work session, I'm sorry. What does DBE stand for?
Disadvantaged Business Enterprise. So 10%. This, because there's federal money, the contractor has to comply with Davis Bacon wages, and the DBE, there's a 10% DBE requirement.
Is this a minority contractor?
It's, I think, I'm not sure. I think they at least use a supplier that's a minority contractor, and that's the way they meet the 10%.
Right.
And that's either, under current definitions, it's still considered to be either a female-owned business or a minority-owned business, is what they define as DBEs.
Still includes maybe?
Yeah.
So Tommy, is there a lot of paperwork with both of those, or?
Yes, there is additional paperwork, and we actually, we forgot to put the wording for the DBE requirements in the original contract that we put out on the street for bid, and so we issued an addendum, which brought all those things to the forefront, and I think that's one reason. We usually get a lot more bidders on these, but I think because we sort of, it was like front-page news, you know, Davis Bacon DBE, that maybe it scared some bidders away.
Usually, it's just a part of the bid.
Right. Usually, it's sort of buried in the contract, and, you know, because we forgot to bury it, it was out front and center, and I, you know, I'm just speculating, and that's why, because we usually have three or four bidders. But the good news is, it, it's a very good bid.
Came in under.
And so we recommend award. The project won't cost the city a dime, because it's lower. If it would have came in over the grant amount, we would have had to make up the difference in order to do the project. But since it's under the grant amount, it's not, the project won't cost us anything.
If it'd come in over, would you have rebid it?
Um, not, not unless it was a lot over, you know. If it was just a small, you know, five, six percent over, probably would have still recommended approval, because it's, you know, $93,000 worth of free money.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tommy. Mr. Housebrock, you got the next item. Chief Carter, you're on deck.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The electric department would like to award a contract for the inspection of pad-mounted equipment on our system, and this work would be done over a three-year period, and we budgeted approximately $25,000 annually for this, for this work. And the scope of the work was bid out by Electric Cities of Georgia, which we are a member city of that, of that organization. And we're able to take advantage of the multiple cities going together, and they bid it out for higher-volume work, so we were able to take advantage of that, of the lower, lower cost. And ECG, Electric Cities of Georgia, has awarded, made award recommendations to Southeastern Wood Pole Inspectors, and they're the, they're the only Georgia-based company. It's pretty specialized work, and this company, we've, we've worked with them before, and they've, we have a good relationship with them. And the electric department recommends that we, we accept the award by ECG to, and award it to Southeastern Wood Pole Inspectors.
All right. Any questions for Don on this one? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Don.
Mayor and council, with one of our apparatus, we ran into some mechanical problems that was going to require the rebuild of the transmission on our 1994 Pierce ladder truck, which is the reserve ladder truck for the city and also reserve engine. Transmission was going to have to be rebuilt. At that particular time, we went through three different vendors, including our own city shop, and to find the best solution to rebuild the transmission. Reliable transmission gave us the best bid of the three, and we began the work. That work was $4,937.85. During the rebuild, though, we found that the computer module that drives the transmission was also bad, so that is going to require an additional work for the rebuild of that computer system, which will be just under $3,000. That part of the work is not being completed. So I've come forward tonight to ask for a total amount of $8,000, not to exceed $8,000 to complete this repair. E-verify safe documents are on file. This is a vendor that we have used before.
Okay. Questions for the chief on this item?
Chief, this is our backup truck.
This is the backup ladder truck, yes, ma'am.
Ladder truck. And a new transmission, not using it, only as backup, should, the life should be what? Maybe another?
We're praying to get at least another 10 years out of this truck. This is a very expensive truck to have to replace. Very expensive.
Motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Molnax, you got the next three.
Mayor, council, the first item is a bid award for the Browns Farm Road pump station rehabilitation. This pump station originally went into service in 1989, and over time, we've increased the number of customers served by this, so the pumps are worn out, they need to be replaced, and we need to go with a larger-sized pump. There is a typo in the memo here, "All South Constructors Bid" is listed as $85,210. I believe that should be $65,210. At upfront cost, that would be the lower bid, but we're recommending Lanier Contracting, which is $300 higher, but they bid using Flight Submersible Pumps, which is a much higher-quality pump, and that's the same brand that we have at all our other pump stations, so it would allow the pump to be interchangeable with our other pumps, and we would have backup pump capability. One of the problems we've always had with this pump station, the original pumps were not off-name brand. Flight is pretty much the Levi jeans of submersible pumps, so we're recommending award of the contract to Lanier Contracting Company in the amount of $65,547.
That was good.
Mayor, I have a question. Ed, are all of our other pumps Flight pumps?
Yes, they are.
Oh, this is the only one that's a non-Levi.
Right.
So this makes us consider...
Are they tough skins, or are they wranglers?
Well, some people would say they're the Beatles. No, you can't do that.
So Ed, when you say they're interchangeable, what do you mean?
These submersible pumps, they're designed to be lifted in and out of the pump station to work on, and the way it attaches to the pot, to the piping at the bottom is called a foot, and so this would make them all the same.
But do you ever pull them out and put? Oh, oh, you do, okay. That's what I didn't understand. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Did the bid instructions break them in?
We...
The pump that was powerful, they already had?
Well, what, the pumps that are there are not Flight pumps. We wanted Flight pumps. Some of the contractors, I guess, don't have the agreement with that company to put those pumps in, so.
I think the question was, was it specific?
We did not specify, we did not specify Flight pumps.
I think that's what Louis would want.
Any other discussion? If there's none, the chair will entertain a motion. Or there's more discussion, go ahead and discuss.
Before we vote, Mayor, I'd like to, to know where Louis is going with that. Do you feel like that last bid might be awful?
Lowest and best, you don't have to take the absolute lowest on dollar amount, the compatibility and the $300 difference, I think, makes the, makes the going with the second lowest.
I understand, but, but I think your question, Louis, is, did they know that they should be bidding on that specific pump?
I'm still, it, you wouldn't break the passage, I just was, that's a question that I think needs to be answered.
Do these companies sell multiple lines, or are they tied to one? If they're quoting, uh...
These are utility, yeah, these are utility contractors, and they do everything from constructing pump stations.
I was just suggesting they may have only had the one today.
Yeah, yes.
But it sounds like they...
We, we feel like this has the lowest lifecycle cost. We're, we're very sure of that.
Any other questions for Ed on this item? If not, a motion would be in order.
I'll make it. If we prove the agreement with Lanier Contracting for $65,400.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
The next item's approval, request for approval to purchase valves and materials for the high-pressure water main. We have a project where we're connecting the two high-pressure systems between Main Street and Center Road. We have that in service now, but what we found out is that to make it fully functional... We have that in service now, but what we found out is that to make it fully functional, we need to have an additional valve installed. We'll handle that by change order with the contractor, with us supplying the materials. We received prices from HD Supply Companies for the pipe materials, fittings, and valves. They were the, they quoted the low price in the amount of nine thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. And this will be paid for as a SPOS project.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Can they revive this from HD Supply?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Ed, please.
And the next item is our annual chemical purchase order approval. And we have a number of chemicals that we use on a bi-weekly, monthly, semi-annual basis. And typically, these prices, we get agreements that are fixed for a year at a time. We quite often have purchases that are over five thousand dollars. So to reduce the need for coming back for council approval, and each time we do one of those purchases, we would like to have approval for these, this list of chemicals that we use on a regular basis.
Do we lock them in, Ed? I mean, are all of them locked in?
This is what they agree to, but if for some reason they come back and announce a price increase, then we would rebid that.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the chemical purchase for the next twelve months.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ed. Mr. Porter, you've got the next three, please.
Yes, Mayor. The first item is vehicle repair by Matthews Garage. One of our city vehicles was involved in an accident a little over a month or so ago, and the repair cost was five thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents. Majority of that was picked up by our insurance company, and the remainder is by our deductible.
There are no questions or comments on this item. A motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. It passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Is the GDOT grant fund reimbursement to the airport authority. The airport authority paid Robert and Company as a contractor on the grant that we have with GDOT for some work at the airport. And the airport has refunded, reimbursed some of the grant funds, the amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars we received, the city received as we, our conduit for the grant. I recommend approval to reimburse the airport authority for forty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay. There are no discussion on this item. Once again, a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item, I guess, before we get into discussion on the update of 2003, 2007 SPOS projects, I would just like to go ahead. Included in that packet, in your packet, was Georgia Power invoice for the Main Street project, the amount of seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy cents, which we discussed several months ago when we were really in the midst of the major construction. I'd like to get city council to approve that expenditure of the seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five, seventy. It's included in the number on the project summary totals that you have.
Chair will entertain a motion to add that item to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added to the agenda. If there's any other further discussion on that item just brought before council. Wait, then a motion for somebody?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, Mayor.
I'm sorry. Well, he requested us to pay an invoice that wasn't on the agenda. I had to have it added to the agenda by you guys, and now you've just approved it.
I'm with you.
All right. I'm sorry, that wasn't included in the discussion portion, but?
We did have, we have on the agenda discussion item. It was obviously discussed a decent amount in work session as part of our public meeting. Is there any other thing that needs to get added to the discussion that was held in the work session?
Well, I just noticed on, and y'all, obviously, I wasn't able to be here, so I apologize, and no reason to go completely back over. But on Mission Road Curve and Main Street Gateway, you know, I know that we're way off on our money, but those two projects went significantly over budget. Can you just talk about that just briefly? Because it's about five million.
Right. Well, the Mission Road Curve, that was prior to me taking over the project. I don't know specifically what all was initially included. And it was a referendum estimate initially. The Main Street Gateway, there was funding available within the '07. Initially, there was some money that was supposed to be from the '07 to pay for some of the underground utility work, as well as some other work. But there was funding available in the '03 SPOS to cover that. That's why that project, the funding is basically out of the '03 SPOS.
Scope of the project, our Mission Road expanded, and we got into some slope stuff out there, as I recall, where we were running water down the hill on a couple houses, and we had to deal with that, too. Of course, you've got to remember, too, it's kind of a different time than, as I put for all of you in my comments in here, if you look at the growth of the sales tax between 2002 and 2007, it's approximately fifty-eight percent. And when you go from 2007 to present, it's fallen like twenty-eight percent. So we thought, and we had no reason to think otherwise, in the 2002, 2007 timeframe, that it's going to continue at that rate. Well, it doesn't.
That was just not, I mean, I just, I was looking at, you know, what we estimated on that SPOS.
What we thought it was going to be.
Seventeen million. And we ended up spending a little more, twenty, well, almost twenty-two million.
Right. Well, the one thing about the 2003 was, at the time, interest earnings were greater, and I was able to invest that, and that's why there's actually more money came in. First of all, the collections came in higher, slightly higher than what was budgeted initially, as well as interest earnings and some other things we got reimbursed from GDOT. And that's also, there's, in the Main Street Gateway, we've got nine hundred thousand. Well, we won't get the full nine hundred thousand, but part of that expenditure is at least about almost five hundred thousand GDOT out of that expenditure. And there's some other, and some of those other projects as well, we got state funds to help. So you see the total expenditure, and then when the referendums come out, it says X amount, but sometimes we fortunate enough to get grants from the state as the project's ongoing.
All right. Any other discussion to be had relative to this topic? Thank you, sir. And Tom, you'll come bring us the financials report, please.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we'll be looking at the July 2013 and comparing to July 2012. In the General Fund, revenues have decreased from last year by about thirty-one thousand dollars. Again, decrease is caused mostly by the lost decrease. Expenses have increased by a little over a thousand dollars. Three years of revenue out of monitor on a monthly basis are local option sales tax. We've had a decrease from last year of sixty-three thousand dollars. Police fines and forfeitures, we've had a decrease of last year of fifteen thousand dollars. Billing permits and inspection fees decreased by about three thousand dollars. The Water and Sewer Fund, revenues decreased from last year by thirty-four thousand dollars. Expenses increased by two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. This is due mainly to increased personnel expenses and increased debt service expenses. And the Gas Fund, revenues have increased from last year by a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Expenses have increased by two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. This increase in expenses is due mostly to increased personnel expenses and increased cost of purchase gas. In the Electric Fund, revenues have decreased from last year by forty-three thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by ninety-one thousand dollars. This is due mainly to decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase of electricity, and decreased capital expenses. Excuse me. And in the Stormwater Fund, revenues increased from last year by four thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by five thousand dollars. This is due to increased, I'm sorry, decreased personnel expenses. Let me back up. This is, this is due to increased, it's a combination of increased personnel expenses and decreased operating expenses. And in the Solid Waste Fund, revenues increased over last year by four thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by twenty-eight thousand dollars. This is due mainly to decreased operating expenses. And finally, in the Fiber Optics Fund, revenues decreased from last year by five thousand dollars, while expenses have increased by seven thousand dollars, due mainly to operating, increased operating expenses. That is my report for the evening.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions on the financial report?
What are the increased personnel expenses on water and gas?
Mainly, it's the cost of health insurance and the other types of personnel insurance.
And as I mentioned to you all earlier, the cash numbers that you've got in your materials, Tom and I talked, and there's another nine hundred thousand that'll come in from the bond projects in the water and sewer that were upfronted by the other funds right then and back. So it's understated.
You said the, the health insurance?
Yes.
Is the cost?
The city's portion of health insurance actually increased July the first in order to get the budget numbers correct. And so we would, so that we don't have a large number, we wanted to kind of spread them out over a twelve-month period of time.
So you guys, it's already went ahead of?
Correct.
So why would it just hit them?
It hit them more so than, it hit everybody, but it kind of was a little more, I don't know what I'm looking for, but it basically came out a little more in the, in the water fund than any of the others. It basically has gone into effect across the board, but it showed a little more in the water fund.
I guess.
Essentially, it was, it's a January, December, but last year, when it approved, the reserve basically worked out of it on a shortfall. And so rolling it forward into the new fiscal year budget, rolling into the budget as a true cost and not taking out the shortfall reserve, that's really what it's doing.
I guess I'm just lost as to why we hit one or two targets.
You're asking only, why did it only hit those?
Why not electric?
I can.
It really depends on how, I think, four years have passed. I don't know, depending on how, can we single family coverage, cost, family cost more, I don't know.
I can certainly look into it and get back to you if you'd like to.
I don't think it's that.
I think the interesting thing about those electric funds finally out of deficit, it had been running one for a couple months. We finally got this month, put this back in the, back to the plan.
That's great.
Sounds good.
Any other questions for Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I guess now we're going to go to the?
Citizen Survey.
Sam has got citizen survey results.
Tom's not here to do it. This is economic and environmental sustainability. First slide is economic sustainability, Ed, to look at the employment opportunities and shopping opportunities and how those are rated. No big surprises here. Both are similar to national, regional norms. The next slide is Cartersville is a place to work. And while it's fallen in absolute terms, these are still similar to the norms in regional and national. That may indicate that it's fallen everywhere, I'm not sure. Overall quality of businesses and service establishments, these have increased a little bit since we started measuring those in '09, but they're still similar to the regional and national norms. Next slide is kind of interesting. These are, the top slide is job growth, or the top line is job growth is seen too slow. The bottom is retail growth is seen too slow. Those numbers have both gone up in an absolute sense, and the indicator is that they're too slow, and they're more, they're below both the regional and national norms, which is an indication of dissatisfaction with job growth and retail growth. Economic development, these are above national and the services are above national, regional norms. I don't know how that fits in with the last slide. It seems a little incongruous, but these are both rated well. Rating of personal economic future, I think this is people looking forward and how positive they feel about their economic future. And that has increased over the ten years that we've been measuring it. Those are much above national and regional norms, believe it or not.
Those are much above?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes. These are kind of interesting. We've only really looked at air quality since '03. And then in '09, 11, and 13, added preservation of natural areas. Overall quality of natural environment and air quality. Air quality always gets dinged. I don't know if that's power plants or because we're so close to the metro area, but those are much below national and regional norms. Preservation, similar to national, regional. Environmental quality, again, that number looks high in an absolute sense, but that's below national and similar to regional. And cleanliness is similar to national, regional norms. This one's a bit of a puzzle, too. You thought that when we started recycling, that you'd see a little bump there between 11 and 13. But these are, frequency recycling is still rated much less nationally and regionally.
Shout out, yeah.
It's rated below the national and regional norms. These are perceptions of what, or people talking about how often they recycle. And these are less than the national and regional norms for other jurisdictions that have reported and been measured. And I would have thought that with the instigation of our recycling program, that you would have seen a little bit of difference, but it's not detectable there.
But there's still sixty-three percent that?
Yeah, yeah.
Recycle frequently, right?
Yeah, and I?
And that's still less than anywhere else.
Yeah, it's less than?
Much less.
Yeah, that, that's?
Interesting.
Yeah, it's puzzling, to say the least. These are rankings of utility services. Real quick, power, above national, much above regional. Sewer, above national, regional. Drinking water, similar to national and regional. Storm drainage and yard waste, above national, much above regional. Way to go, Tommy. Recycling and garbage is above national and above regional. You're just doing?
Which goes against the?
Yeah, yeah. We may be further confused after all these, but that's, that's what the survey says, folks. So that's all I got tonight.
Well, you worked in incongruous, and you also worked in a quote from Richard Dawson.
Woo!
Anything else that needs to come for council this evening? Come on, Greg.
And I didn't even question your ballgame either. I didn't mic or see if to take you to it.
Okay, tomorrow night is our youth football night for the Carlsel High School. It's, Carlsel High School plays North Murray, and all of our youth football teams and youth cheerleading squads will be attending and get to walk across the grass. It's always a big event for them. And then on Thursday, October the third, city and council members will be receiving an invitation. That is the date that Bartow County, the commissioner in Bartow County Green Space will be doing the Leek Mounds interpretive trail dedication. That is on the, well, the side of the greens, Bartow County Green Space on the other side of the river, that the city's eighty, proposed eighty-four lumber site is as part of that. We've got about a one-mile trail there. And anyway, that dedication will take place on Thursday, October the third, at 12:15, but you will be receiving an invitation for that.
You didn't go hiking tonight? Sir? Didn't you go hiking tonight?
No, I got folks doing that.
You delegate your hiking?
I did.
That's a man alive.
I do, too.
Anything else that needs to come for council tonight? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Adjourn.